Good afternoon and welcome to the August 19th Council Committee of the Whole. We have one item of business today, and as we're following standing committee, we previously had our land acknowledgement read. I'm going to call this meeting to order and move to item, the one item on our agenda today, the Richmond View Outline Plan servicing. And I'll turn that one over to Mr. Johnson for introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. If I could just get my screen up on the... Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Background on this application is that administration has received an application for a new outline plan in the Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan area. That's shown on the air photo, west of the airport, east of the Highway 43 intersection, and north of 100th Avenue. As noted, it falls within the Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan Plan area. The subject property is highlighted at the bottom of the plan area. The name of the outline plan is Richmond View Outline Plan, and the plan proposes dry lot development. Dry lot development means that it is unserviced, it's not connected to municipal services, and all the water and sanitary infrastructure would be located on site such as water cisterns and septic tanks. Developer-funded extension of the necessary water and sanitary services is simply not feasible. The, both the water and sanitary extensions would be approximately three kilometers from their existing locations, shown on the air photo above. In 2021, Aqua Terra completed an interim servicing study for the Hughes Lake area. Interim services would have, in 2021 prices, would approximately be 6.5 million, and then cost to upgrade them from interim to ultimate would exceed 20 million. Couple of maps shown on for water and sanitary servicing from that study. The municipal development plan does provide for development opportunities in advance of the area structure plan or outline plan. It limits the development to four parcels in the quarter section. The MDP also entertains alternative servicing methods. It states that the city will investigate key infrastructure investment. Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan identifies a number of interim servicing strategies. Dry lots is included as an interim strategy. It provides for directions for next steps if interim strategies are to be utilized. Key considerations for council on this particular application is that the subject property is at the lower end of the future water and sanitary network. The level of service provided in this area will have a significant impact on the ability to service the rest of the Hughes Lake Area Structure Plan area. Transitioning from dry lots to municipal services poses major construction and financial challenges, therefore potentially unfeasible, and the choices made now will dictate future serviceability of adjacent lands. If the city chose to fund the extension of services, cost recovery could take many years or may never occur. And with that, I'm open to any questions or comments.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that introduction, Mr. Johnson. And just so council is aware, there is a proponent here to ask questions particularly on behalf of the client. If you do have questions, I can call Mr. Hussey forward. But, so just indicate whether your questions are for administration, and if not, I will, if there are additional questions that Mr. Johnson or administration isn't prepared to answer, we will ask Mr. Hussey to come forward. I'll start with Council Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, I'm fully not understanding what's meant by this is at the bottom of the network. As a layperson, that sounds like it's at the end of, it's the last mile, so you just don't build the last mile, it doesn't have a big impact on other things, does it? So, when you say doing dry lots here would have a big impact on servicing other lots, is that purely just because we don't have as much land paying for the developments that are needed, or is it because we actually need pipes to go through this land to get to other areas?
Through the mayor, it's the second scenario noted. So, it would be one of the first parcels to connect to the municipal services. The services would run through the parcel to adjacent properties. So, it's, in terms of the service area, it's relatively close to the extensions.
Okay, so it's kind of like it's the first mile of infrastructure, not the last?
That's correct.
Okay, just was understanding the lower. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Tison.
I guess I got in there quick. So, Joe, just touching base, maybe expanding on Dylan's there. I understand the unfeasibility of it as it's fairly close to it, but if, it did say that it was possible to convert that, but it would be unfeasible for the city to do it. Who's responsible if, let's say, this were to go through as a dry lot, and then later we wanted to draw a pipe through there for the conversion? Is there an agreement we can sign with the landowner? Does that fit in the municipal government act, or would they be responsible for the cost of the pipe going underneath that land when we wanted to put pipe through?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, through the mayor. So, in the report, I did list a number of strategies that would need to be addressed prior to approving it as dry lot development, if the intentions are that eventually the parcel would be connected to municipal services. And basically, the city would have a lot of work to do in terms of creating new development standards for these areas, and preparing a clear transition framework for when ultimate servicing is introduced. As I'm aware, and perhaps my colleagues can correct me, I'm not sure if the city has any experience with these mechanisms, and I anticipate them to be quite complicated to both develop and administer. And so, the steps on this, let's see, it's on page three of the report. Those are quite broad, that's quite a broad list of work that the city would have to do.
No, it's in your page.
It's in the report.
Report, page three.
Okay, so I guess, no, thanks for that. I guess part of my question was just as feasibility around the cost of it. The ability is still there to do it, but we would have to go through all these large steps in order to make it so.
Through the mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Burke?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess I'm looking to get educated on a few different things. So, of course, we're majority-
How much time do you need? Sorry.
What are you guys doing for the next two? With our investment in Aqua Terra, I assume that it would be Aqua Terra that would actually be managing this project as opposed to the city. Is there some way that we could, as a majority shareholder, direct them, or is this something that the city actually has to lay out cash for? Because I know, you know, there's a number of lines, water lines through the county and out to a variety of towns that are well in excess of that three kilometers. So, I'm just kind of curious, you know, what the overall process is.
Mr. Johnson or Chief Glavine?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I don't believe that we could direct them to build it. We could make a contribution to them and get shares for that, is my understanding.
Okay. And have we considered water only and doing septic until there's enough development to warrant a second phase?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, no, I'm not aware of considering water only.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just, I think I know the answer, but I'm just curious. So, when you choose to develop in the city limits of Grand Prairie and anywhere, are the off-site levies the same whether you're right beside existing roads and networks or like this where you're kind of Hughes Lake and trying to catalyze to start a whole new area?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, yes, they are the same, and our off-site levies only cover transportation.
So, we don't have any additional levies for these types of developments that are nowhere near services or anything like that?
That's through the mayor, no, we do not.
Sort of. Go ahead. Ms., Counsel Bressi, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, but isn't that what the Aqua Terra meter fees meant to capture?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, yes, the service connection fees do cover what a normal off-site levy would cover.
Yeah. So, I just want to confirm. So, currently for the city, really, we have no mechanism to, you know, if there's leapfrogging of a major development like this, there's no mechanism of, we're buying the cheaper land farther from town, and now there's going to be an additional servicing cost to get it. We don't have any mechanism currently to charge a different amount from a piece of land that's right beside all services and all the road networks versus something like this is that's, you know, the beginning of a new development. There's the exact same cost for what we receive from the city.
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Just, that might be another conversation or another day, but to me, that seems odd that we would have just one dollar amount for the same amount. Not trying to be anti-development, but I think we'd like to see this make out work, but at the same time, I don't know if it's in our best interest to create leapfrogging if you have the same rate, have the same development fee to do the same things. And so, I'm a little bit concerned about that, and I'd like to see these projects go ahead, but I am a little bit concerned that we don't have separate fees for those kind of things. So, I'll have another question in a bit. Thanks.
Counsel Blackmore?
We used to have off-site levies for sewer and water, but it was prior to Aqua Terra. So, that's why we don't have them anymore, because we created that corporation. Mr. Johnson, can you give me like a quick lesson on the difference between interim services and ultimate services for water and sewer?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, I can do my best, and if I miss something, perhaps my colleagues can chime in on this. Interim services would be something like, for water, it would be a trickle feed system, so it's a smaller line, and it trickle feeds water into a cistern on site. So, there's private on-site infrastructure such as a cistern for water or a septic tank for sewer. And throughout the day, the cistern will fill up, and then the demands of the building on the property would drain the cistern as needed, as opposed to just having all the water you need at the turn of a tap with, you know, full servicing. So, that's an example of interim water. But in the case of dry lot, there wouldn't even be a trickle feed, there would just be a cistern, and water would be trucked to site. And then, same with sanitary, in that there would be a tank on site, and if it's a low-pressure sanitary, then it will take what it can, and the solids will remain on site, and occasionally the septic tank would need to be pumped out, as opposed to ultimate servicing, which would just be the sanitary waste leaves the site immediately.
And so, how does fire protection fit into a dry lot scenario?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, there are opportunities for having water ponds on site to which the fire department could tie into. Beyond that, I'm not aware of, much beyond that in terms of fire protection.
My concern is, I know that several years ago, when industrial area next to the airport, whatever-
Oshu Industrial.
Oshu, that was built without services. Then, when they decided they wanted services, it was a nightmare to process that, to figure out how to pay for it, to get it installed. They only wanted sewer, but in actual fact, they needed water for fire protection, and it was very expensive, it was awkward, and it was fairly ugly. I'm not looking forward to doing that again sometime in the future. Even if we did an interim service to the site, at least we have pipe in the ground, I'm, I would, I guess my concern really is if we want to take the step back and to do the work, to employ strategies to provide that clear transition framework, et cetera, is that going to freeze the development or delay it, or can it go forward as it is and we work with them? Or, I have no idea how that might proceed, and I'm looking for some clarification.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, through the mayor, I would suggest that if that were the case, then perhaps the landowner could work within the policies of the MDP that do allow some development to occur prior to adoption of the outline plan. The development concept would likely need to be altered to provide for the ultimate servicing to occur. So, I believe we would need direction on what we were doing prior to the outline plan being adopted.
Yeah, I think we need to find a happy medium somewhere between the two that doesn't make our lives in the future really miserable, but still triggers development in lands that we really want to see start to develop.
Through the mayor, if I could just add to some of Counselor Blackmore's comments, and again, if I'm missing something, please chime in here. But if we proceeded with the development such that interim servicing was going to be provided, it still doesn't eliminate the challenges of upgrading to ultimate servicing, because it's not like the pipes in the ground are going to take care of the needs. They will need to be removed and replaced with the ultimate servicing infrastructure.
The capacity just isn't there.
The capacity would not be there, and so you're faced with the same challenges of ripping up the roads, or ditches, or right-of-ways and whatnot to get the ultimate servicing in.
I'm just gonna, because we're similar on this vein, so $6.5 million to service it, if a future council chose to take that initiative to, let's say, initiate potential development in that area, $6.5 million. Back to the off-site levy conversation, though. It's not a current practice, but it is a potential opportunity to collect some of the investment, correct?
That's correct. It would be, that would be point number three, which would be establish funding mechanisms for cost recovery and/or funding future infrastructure upgrades.
Yeah, thank you. Counsel O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Mr. Johnson, I'm just curious if the property and the road network, do they have to follow what our outline plan shows right now for all the roads?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, I'll take some liberty with that question. I think possibly what you mean is that the outline plan has to conform with what's shown for the area structure plan.
That's correct.
And generally, yes, the development concept must respect the, the development concept of the outline plan must respect the general development concept of the area structure plan. We do use our discretion in review in allowing some minor discrepancies, but if it's something major that has an impact on adjacent lands and whatnot, then we would require an amendment.
So, a follow-up is, and I know we prefer if, from Aqua Terra's standpoint, they'd rather go in a straight line and not make bends and turns, and there's pump stations and everything. And I was thinking on the east side of the property, could you still accomplish that without affecting and going through somebody's property, or is that just too complex?
Mr. Johnson?
Through the mayor, I'm not sure I fully understand the question.
Well, you go to drawing number seven of nine, you look at the, there's little yellow, I assume that's a subdivision there in the yellow bottom right of that square, and if you, we know that there's potential development coming along the red connector route. I'm just wondering if we just take a different approach rather than having to leapfrog and go through somebody's property. Just throwing an idea out there.
Yeah, I, yeah. You've thrown your idea out there.
Just wondering if it's possible.
Counsel Bressi?
Great, thank you. I'm just trying to understand, so if we did decide to kind of speculate on this and do some servicing, I'm trying to figure out how better understand how the financing works. So, we build these pipes, we turn it over to Aqua Terra, we attract mandatory dividends out of those, but I'm assuming that we wouldn't get any part of the service fee when properties hook up to that. That would fully go to Aqua Terra. Our compensation is just the shares. Am I correct in that?
Hundred percent correct. Mr., Chief Glavine got it. Okay, yep, nope.
Okay. And then, how does that, are there any mechanisms or anything where in terms of, if I know development's going here, I've potentially got an appetite to support servicing like that, I'm sure not interested in doing that ahead of other plans to do a greenfield that might, there might literally never be anything there. I'm willing to speculate on some cost recovery, sure not willing to build a pipe that's literally going to nothing. Are there any mechanisms we could use to say, when development's ready to happen here, hey, we're willing to build a pipe, but here are the mechanisms in place to make sure that what's being asked to build this pipe to actually gets built?
Mr. Burke?
Might just look at some other examples, and we'd have to look in just maybe if, whether there's a difference between our relationship with Aqua Terra. But there are other municipalities that do invest in projects like this and have latecomer agreements where they front the money and as development comes on board. St. Albert is currently doing a significant one in their industrial area. We'd have to look just if there's some nuances, but it is possible under the MGA for us to be, make investments into, into infrastructure and to look at latecomer as development comes on. The risk is, though, all with the municipality that's funding it, because those developments can take many decades to pay back. So, possible though.
Counsel Blackmore, and then I'm going to jump in the queue.
I guess my question is, we are also talking about developing airport lands, a lot of which is not serviced either. And I'm wondering if this is a appropriate time to have a discussion with Aqua Terra on what their plans are, what our plans are, how those line up, and how we can best service those lands' needs. Because I don't see this as just being a couple of pipes going to one location. It's a long-term investment in an area that could generate significant income for the city, and I'm just wondering if we've had those discussions with Aqua Terra, if we should be, I know we've had tentative ones or kind of vague discussions with them, but if we want to be more directed in those discussions of what we're asking for, and whether or not we can come up with a joint agreement that would serve everyone in the room and Aqua Terra best.
So, the piece I'll jump in that I know for sure, there was previous conversations on potential servicing on land north of the airport, and that sort of, when council's initiative to, in Hughes Lake, was to look at potential investment opportunities, those early conversations with Aqua Terra did happen, not costing, not what it would look like, et cetera. At that time, it was not of interest to Aqua Terra, but that's all I know. If anyone else has anything else to add. Chief Glavine, is there any recollection, if you have additional context? On that vein, I had a question, though, Joe, and maybe it's on one of your maps and I missed it. The water extension that is on page five, I think it is, in the red and blue, the required water extension and the required sanitary extension, that shows a red and blue on the map, where does it currently end? Tell me that. Way back to the east? So, currently, there's none of this. Okay, so that whole red piece would be new, and the whole blue piece. Okay, okay. I had a question for maybe Ms. Whiteway, I don't know who. Have we done any speculation on what tax assessment would be on the land prior to the options that are being presented versus serviced land?
No, Mayor Clayton, we haven't. I don't have that. I'm not sure if Mr. Johnson does, but-
No.
Through the mayor, I do not. And even if the land was serviced, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be assessed until it was taken out of agricultural use, so.
Right, which is why I'm happy Mr. Hussey's here. I will recognize Counsel Plot, and then I'll ask Mr. Hussey to come forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Mine is just kind of building on Counsel Blackmore's, you know, we've had meetings with Aqua Terra, making sure that they have a business case for certain lines. So, I guess for me, I'd be curious, before we went forward, to actually see if Aqua Terra would accept this. It's one thing for us to spend $6 million and put a line in. Maybe I'm misunderstanding some of the conversations we have on Aqua Terra, but they're saying that they want to see business cases more for lines and that they actually have to be feasible. So, if we put six- So if we put $6 million in, are we guaranteed these are going to roll into shares or not? And I guess I'd like to hear that with Aquaterra, because I'm getting a different.
Well, we recently had a question, conversation with Aquaterra, and the reality is, if a shareholder of Aquaterra wants to turn over an asset, Aquaterra takes that asset. This is the ongoing contributions, conversations in regards to operations and maintenance of infrastructure that's handed over from Aquaterra, that becomes a burden to the financial realities of Aquaterra when it pays less dividends, because you're maintaining and operating infrastructure that doesn't have enough clients.
And maybe I don't fully understand Aquaterra. I guess for me, I'd be concerned, knowing that we actually can transfer that and get our full shares out of it. I'd like to see something or know.
There's nothing in the shareholders' agreement right now. Go ahead, Chief Glavine.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I think perhaps what Counselor Plott is thinking of is that they, the last time I recall this discussion is that they were looking at business cases, and they were looking at it more in the context of rate riders for pipelines that are not paying it back. So if they have to do additional maintenance, then it might cost the users an additional rate rider on it to make, make economic sense, I think is where Aquaterra was thinking.
That's exactly it, yeah. And unless there's a change to the shareholder agreement, there's nothing that prohibits a shareholder from turning over infrastructure at this point. But the rate rider covers the operational piece, for sure.
Okay.
Mr. Hesse, if you'd come forward and just introduce yourself for those who may be watching online, and then I'll open up to counsel that may have questions in regards to who you're representing today and the proponents.
My name is Dennis Hesse. I work with Barison Associates. I represent the landowner here today, and we've been following this project for probably 18 months now, and we're in this process right now of trying to move this forward so they can actually make an application.
So you're here in, really as a litmus test to see what council's interest is in the opportunities for your client?
100% yes.
Okay. Counsel Blackmore?
Can you, I don't know if you can divulge this information, but if you can, can you give us some indication of if we hit the go button, how long it would take for the landowner to complete the development and sell, sell his lots?
It's hard to really comment on how long it would develop this out. I know they're in a position right now where they're looking to make an application in prior to the outline plan being adopted, just based on what's in the MDP. We're looking at making two additional lots right now and splitting the existing lot in half.
Okay. And is it purely speculative, or he has people lined up?
Well, through conversations with him, he gets asked a couple times a year if he, for future lots available in this area. And of course, he's been kind of outing these as being dry lots, and that is a bit of a draw with the, just the cost for getting out there.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Hesse, with that expectation that, you know, the preferred, the client's preference is dry lots, I would think that, would it be fair to say that there's potential pipe lay-down yards? What types of projects could you anticipate being in this area?
Yeah, it's going to be exactly that. It's going to be large gravel yards with chops out there is what we expect.
Any other questions for Mr. Hesse? None. Thank you so much for being here. All right, so I'll open it up to council. There's an opportunity here, and as administration in the report recommends that we receive this report for information, if there is other work that council would like to see done, there is opportunities, options listed, and I would open it up to council for some direction. Recognizing Counsel Blackmore?
I'm happy to receive this report for information, but I think that it's pretty clear we need to do some significant work in figuring out how to bring a completely undeveloped land into the city and make it developable. And I'm looking at the, the five recommendations to amend the city and/or Aquaterra's development standards that list there. I, I think that whether the two things are linked, whether this is linked directly to that piece of land or just linked to that land in general, I think it's fairly clear that we are not economic ready to proceed with development there. We need to pick up the pace there, I think, and, and put some, make some significant changes in what we expect to see. I know from experience that adding water and sewer to a developed land, add, you know, after it's developed, is painful and expensive and just makes everybody mad. So I would like to see some kind of combination of the two, where we could continue to let the land move forward in the process that's going through, while at the same time, come up with a better process that we can rely on in future development. I don't see any other way of doing it except kind of like a two-step process like that.
I guess my comment would be, Counsel Blackmore, I don't know if it's possible to do both at the same time. You can't, you know, like, we can't, traditionally, we couldn't go status quo, and at the same time, we're going to direct administration to go away and do some work and come back for consideration and, and look at multiple layers of this. Once the proponent is allowed to go, you've kind of set the lay of the land without having those additional costs, as you mentioned. Unless I'm misunderstanding what you're saying. Mr. Burke?
I would just add, and I'll have Mr. Johnson fill in the details, but they are permitted to do some develop, dry lot development under the current existing rules. It is limited and smaller scale than they, that they're hopeful for, but that is an option for them to proceed with some limited scope, correct?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, through the mayor, that's correct. The MDP does allow for four lots per quarter section with a maximum cumulative area of 40 acres to be subdivided in advance of an outline plan.
And I'm assuming that's not enough for the proponent, and that's why we're here today?
Through the mayor, I can't speak to that necessarily. It is an option, and then, yeah, I'm not sure if it's adequate for the applicant or not.
Okay, I have no one else in the queue, so I'm just looking for some direction. There's a recommendation from administration. There is also alternatives as listed, and there is, as Counsel Blackmore mentioned, strategies that the city could undertake. Recognizing Counsel Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess for me, I'm just going to make a motion to committee to receive this report for information for now. I don't know what else I think that we can do at this point, other than getting on our checkbook, and so I'm not prepared to do that at this point, for me. So I would just make a motion to receive for information.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call a question.
Oh, two in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Recognizing Counsel Blackmore?
I have no idea how to word this motion, but I would like to see, I would like to see us move forward with developing this, the, the strategies outlined from number one to five for future Hughes Lake development, or I'm looking for some kind of assistance.
I would, I'm thinking that the motion would be to direct administration to bring back a report not limited to the items as listed. However, I'll ask Mr. Burke if there's additional.
I think that's a good suggestion, Mayor Clayton, and then we can better refine the scope and resources required to action that. But for us to, now, knowing that there's some interest from council for us to proceed, we'll look at what level of effort that requires and report back to council.
Did you get a motion out of that, Amanda?
So it's direct administration to bring back a report and not limited to, but including the strategies, one to five, as indicated. Okay, is, that's good, Ms. Chief Glavine, Mr. Johnson. Okay, you're happy, Counsel Blackmore?
Yeah.
As that gets into the East Crib, I'll recognize Counsel Bressi.
Yeah, thank you, and I won't support the motion. I know for me, as I think about this land, I've, and I think about the city, I've got no desire to, to enable rural-style development within city limits. I think we never win that competition for area-getting land here. We're never gonna, it's a, we might get developments here or there, but to get wholesale development of that quarter of the city, we're never going to get that trying to compete with rural, rural neighbors on their type of land. And when I'm thinking about this land for not just the next five to 10 years, but 20, 30, 40 years, I really do think that urban-style industrial development, which does mean full service, is critical for this part of the land. So personally, I do potentially, and strong emphasis on potentially, but I do potentially have some interest in exploring ways that we can provide some initial upfront cash to get that urban-style development going, and I'm up with that conversation, but I've got no interest in doing a whole bunch of work to enable dry ponds and more rural service, style servicing this close to the airport, which is such a strategic piece of land. I just think it's a mistake when I'm thinking about the vision of this land 20, 30, 50 years out, so I can't support this motion.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question.
Two in favor?
And that is carried six to two. With this, I'll call the meeting adjourned and wish you all a good day. Thank you.